Good morning. It is 10:01 on January 10, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our beloved, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens. Basil, aye. Now it is time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Like last time, if you are here to speak on accessory dwellings, we'll just ask you to save your comment until that item. Anyone interested in making public comment on anything other than accessory dwellings, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one will close public comment number one and move to, we have no agency reports, so move to bid opening for RCB Culvert. Single box on 640th Avenue. Good morning.
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 Yes, please turn your mics on. You can pull the mic close to you. There you go.
Okay, Tyler's gonna start with the one with the three boxes tied on it. And none of the bidders from the first sheet submitted a bid, so we can flip to the second.
First bidder we have is PCI. For project L dash C 23 dash dash 73 dash 85 bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is $90,773.75. For project L dash IC 9 dash dash 73 dash 85, their bid bond is signed and attached. The bid for this project is $95,197.50. For project L dash LIN 36 dash dash 73 dash 85, the bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $119,696.00. Their total for the three projects is $305,667.25. The next bidder we have is Progressive Structures LLC out of Luxembourg, Iowa. For project L dash C 23 dash dash 73 dash 85, the bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $101,648.50. For project L dash IC 9 dash dash 73 dash 85, their bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $101,859.00. For project L dash LIN 36 dash dash 73 dash 85. Their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is $134,907.00. Their total for the three projects is $338,414.50. The next bidder we have for this project, or for this, these projects is Rogus Brothers out of Lake Mills. Their bid bond for L dash C 23 dash 73 dash 85 is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $95,570.00. For project L dash IC 9 dash dash 73 dash 85, their bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $97,549.40. For project L dash LIN 36 dash dash 73 dash 85, the bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $125,234.30. Their bid for this project So we will run the numbers, double check everything, but it appears PCI may be the low bidder. So for project L dash U 32 dash dash 73 dash 85, the first bidder we have is Peterson Contractors out of Rhinebeck, Iowa, and their bid bond is attached and signed. And their bid for this project is $159,284.50. Excuse me. The next bidder we have is Progressive Structures out of Luxembourg, Iowa. Their bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $178,150.90.
Could you repeat that one more time? Thank you.
The last bidder we have is Rogus Brothers Excavating out of Lake Mills, Iowa. Their bid bond is attached and signed. Their bid for this project is $205,735.50. Again, we'll check these numbers and bring them back next week, but it appears Peterson Contractors is a little bitter on this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, moving on, we've got consideration of minutes.
I move approval of the December 20th, 22 minutes, December 20, 22 special minutes, December 27, 22 minutes, and the January 3, 2023 minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Moving on to consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Now we have public hearing items. Third consideration of ordinance 308, amending Chapter 85 general provisions and definitions in Chapter 85, district requirements of Story County Land Development Regulation. Regulations of Story County Court of Ordinances for accessory dwelling units. Good morning, Amelia.
Good morning. So this is third consideration. Just a summary, at first consideration, we increased the square footage maximum to 1,200 square feet. On second consideration, you amended the ordinance again to exclude the square footage of finished or unfinished basements from this maximum that is reflected in the ordinance. It's on your agenda. There was a memo, I'm not going to go through the details where we talked about some of the research county staff did to come up with recommendations on the maximum size and then also the, the limit of being within 200 feet of the existing dwelling. There was some discussion last time about rewriting this requirement a little bit. And so staff just wanted to reiterate that, you know, the idea was to protect farmland and natural areas and preserve typical rural densities with that requirement. And so our goal was to, you know, operationalize that into something that was enforceable. I think when we talk about take, just a prohibition on taking farmland out of production, you know, how do we define that? Does it include hay? How do we track that? And so something that was, you know, more numeric was a way to achieve that goal with an ordinance that was easier to administrate. I'm happy to take any questions. Um, we are recommending approval on third.
Question?
I don't have any read at the moment.
Okay, I did have one question about the 200 feet. Is it possible to make that more flexible in some way and allow for some adjustments around natural areas or, or you know, I don't, I don't know the specific language, but around natural areas so that there's just some extra flexibility in there about where people might cite that accessory.
Sure. I think it would be within the goal of the ordinance if we add it flexibility. So if someone's trying to not impact a natural area, we're still citing as closely as possible, but avoiding impacts. And we do define natural areas to include steep slopes. So if topography is a concern, that, that, that change would also address topography. And you could just include it in, you know, the provision for the 200 foot limitation. There's already an exception for waste and wastewater treatment systems. So you could include, you know, impacts to natural areas as mapped in our C2C and other future land use plans.
So do you have some language for that?
Yes.
Okay. But the only way to really operationalize that would be that it would need to be in accordance with accepted land use plans that we already have.
Yes, I think staff has done a very detailed study of our natural areas and redone the mapping, and that'll be on a, on a future agenda. We've worked with county conservation staff to review that as well. And so we have natural areas mapped. Those include wetlands, prairies, savannas, significant trees, other riparian areas, floodplains, and steep slopes. And we adopt that through the C2C comprehensive plan map.
Right.
And then in the fringe area, it's like a cookie cutter, right? That two mile area is cut out of the C2C plan and that map is adopted as part of the fringe plan. So the natural areas mapping is also shown on the fringe plan map. So the, the language would need to read essentially, the closest wall of the accessory dwelling unit shall not be further than 200 feet from the existing single family dwelling, unless necessary to avoid either the location of the existing wastewater treatment system and laterals and required setbacks therefrom or impact to critical natural resources areas as mapped in the C2C future land use map or Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework map. In these instances, it shall be cited as close as possible to the existing single family dwelling while avoiding impacts to these areas.
Should it say unless a further distance is necessary perhaps?
Um.
A greater distance.
Unless a greater distance is necessary to avoid in that section? Sure. That's a fine edit. Yeah. Sorry, I was trying to think about.
Yeah, then that builds in an even greater level of flexibility. I am still really interested in, in just kind of us keeping track of what, what requests planning and development is getting for accessory dwelling units and I'm taking another look at this. Also, you know, in the future, if it, if it looks like and it's not meeting the need.
Sorry. And at this point, they're not allowed. So this would be allowing them. So I think it would be good to kind of track and as we've mentioned in previous hearings of what the requests are for what size, location, and if there are any barriers that we need to relook at.
So that's a good point. We're not restricting anything in our current zoning ordinance. We're adding an option.
Right. Right.
And my plan is to keep track of that on a spreadsheet and report back as part of the quarterly reports. And then in the, in the final quarter, report with, with some more details for the year on what trends we've seen in the barriers as well.
Okay. Anything else before I open public hearing? Raise a merkin? Okay. Well, we will go ahead and open public hearing. And we've got several folks here wanting to make a public comment. It looks like first we have Liesel Danielson. And if you could just make sure the microphone is turned on, that would be great.
Is that close enough?
Yep. Good morning.
Good morning. Liesel Danielson, 2981 South Dakota Avenue. My kids are the sixth generation to live on South Dakota Avenue. When I was a kid, it was rural Route 3. So our roots definitely run deep. When they ask me why I have to keep going to these meetings, there's where I get emotional. I tell them if I don't, who will? I'd like to thank my great grandparents, my great great grandparents would be proud that I'm standing here today advocating for my rural neighbors. Who else will tell you that the 200 feet is unreasonable? Because it is. The ordinance could have a wonderful opportunity, could be a wonderful opportunity for so many people across the county, but if it doesn't work for everyone, then it is unreasonable. Staff states that one of the reasons for the 200 feet is to protect natural resources. A big reason I am against the 200 feet is so that we can have the flexibility to protect our natural resources. They may not all be defined in the C2C plan. It may be a grove of trees where an owl lives. You know, we don't, you don't know what's on anybody's certain property. So has any group worked harder to advocate for the natural areas this past year than us? Staff also wants to preserve agricultural land, but if someone owns agricultural land, that is their choice and right by Iowa law whether to put house on their agricultural land. Staff also states concerns about density and development patterns, but rural areas by nature have houses that are spaced further apart, not closer together. I did use the measuring tool on parcels all around Story County, and I can tell you that the requirement is unreasonable for a lot of parcels, especially ones with natural areas. But also you have farmland that, you have, you have land that has pasture and horse pasture. I've put in fencing for horse pasture. To ask me to pull out all those fence posts for a house is unreasonable. It is hard work and it's expensive. I'm standing up here today to speak for my neighbors in all of Story County who may someday want or need this ordinance, and I want it to work for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Becky Christensen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Becky Christensen, 2985 South Dakota Avenue. This may be a little bit redundant from what my daughter just said, but I grew up in Story County and have lived here nearly all my life. Our grandchildren are sixth generation Story County residents, all in Southwest Ames. Southwest Ames is a caring, strong community. We support one another. In fact, my great grandmother started a neighborhood club in 1931 that is still growing strong today, 92 years later. This accelerated, excuse me, this accessory dwelling ordinance is very important for Story County residents. Looking back at my own family history, my great grandparents had what would now be considered an accessory dwelling on their farm. Also where my great grandmother lived for her elderly later years. My, my own grandparents built a small retirement home on the same parcel as our family farmhouse in 1955. So our growing family could move into the bigger farmhouse. They loved being able to look out over the sunrise and watch the crops going up on the, on the field outside their house. My grandfather was able to stay in that accessory home until he passed away at the age of 102 years. I know there are other families like ours in Story County that could benefit from the ADU ordinance, including our neighbors, the Upadoll family. Please don't put an unnecessary barrier on this opportunity that no other county has. For the most flexible plan, the 200 foot restriction should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Christensen.
Good morning. You got the trifecta today. The I guess you know, I've written several letters concerning this and how wonderful this ordinance could be. And how wonderful it is, is taken away with the 200 feet restriction, a restriction that I can't find any place in any ordinance around the state. It seems if you're going to do an ordinance, you would want to do an ordinance that people would be encouraged to use for growth. Not only places like around close to Ames where the, the staff has recommended no lot splitting. And therefore you really don't have the opportunity to build another dwelling, but also for any place in the county where they don't want to go through a subdivision or lot splitting situation and they want to help out another family member or somebody else with a, with a housing. And the 200 feet is not doable. It just doesn't work. And if you're going to say, well, yeah, you can do the 200 feet, but then you have to come back and prove that there's not a tree that needs to be moved or it's in a conservation area that should be concerned with. You're taking away people's freedoms in, in, in so many different ways. And it's not to protect farmland because as Liesel has explained it, we've explained to you in letters that the farmland, the people who own farmland can build a house anyplace they want by state statute. So it's really to just to restrict this ordinance. That's what it's there for, the 200 feet. And I think it's a very wrong way to approach writing ordinances in, in, in Story County, which has tremendous restrictions already and really has a great reputation for being very restrictive. I don't think this will help in that, going in that particular direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? You can raise your hand on Zoom or step to the podium. Seeing no one will close the public hearing. I just want to make one quick comment. It's not staff's recommendation of no lot splitting in the fringe, correct? That's the, that's the city of Ames. Correct?
Yeah, that's something that would be the case whether or not we had a French plan. The city has subdivision review authority and to do a split, you have to meet full city infrastructure standards, which isn't possible in the unincorporated areas.
And can you, do you have, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, I don't want to take over.
Go ahead.
Can you speak to the, the fact that anyone with farmland can place a house wherever regardless?
Yeah, that's not. I believe that's referencing an agricultural exemption process. And so it's not just any farmland. It is when you are proposing a structure, could be a house, and the primary purpose of that structure is agricultural or supportive of agricultural operations. So for a house, it's a pretty high bar to meet.
Okay.
It, we don't see a lot of them for houses. You know, the last one for an exemption for a house that I saw was Kathy Mann's son that had moved back to their farm, in fact, and needed he, she's on our planning and zoning commission. They do a lot of cattle farming by colo and that is his primary job. So that's why that was an ag exempt dwelling. As an example, for accessory structures, when we get ag exemptions and it's gotta be over 50% for storage of tractors or hay or other agricultural equipment. It's not just someone farms a little bit. It's, that's the purpose. Oh, and one other thing, if I may. Oh, and one other thing, if I may. If there's natural resources areas that we've missed on the C two C plan. You know, I think staff is open to protecting it. That's a goal of ours. And there's an amendment process that you can go through if you think we've, we've missed something.
So. Are we ready for a motion? I'll move the Story County Board of Supervisors approve ordinance three oh eight, amending chapter eighty five, general provisions and definitions in chapter eighty six. District requirements of Story County zoning. Story County Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations to allow accessory dwelling units in the A one, A R, R one and R two zoning districts. With the additional language proposed by the Planning and Development Director on third consideration.
Second.
Didn't seconded any further discussion? Merkin.
Hi.
Headens.
I.
Basil, I. Next, we have consideration of resolution twenty three dash four nine, amending veterans benefits mute. Manual in accordance with section twenty two point oh four of Story County Iowa Code of Ordinance. Morning Brett.
Morning, morning board.
Morning Brett.
This is a kind of a catch up from the. Increase in income guidelines. Chapter, chapter thirty five B of the Code of Iowa outlines the legal basis. For the County Commission of Veterans Affairs in Story County. Veterans Affairs Director administers the Veterans Affairs Program under general supervision of Veterans Affairs Commission. Chapter twenty two. Section twenty two oh four establishes the county Veterans Affairs Benefits Manual. A little bit of history. December of twenty nineteen. A review was done and we were looking at increasing the income guidelines by ten percent. And that was done May fifth of twenty twenty by the Board of Supervisors. Ten percent increase was in fact. Increase to the income guidelines, making more veterans eligible for the program. However, from July first of twenty twenty one to May eleventh of twenty twenty two. We were only able to assist two veterans. These are indigent veterans with five hundred and fifty dollars each for rent assistance. January of twenty twenty two, I brought this up to the, at our monthly commission meeting. Basically. Not, we wouldn't increase the amount of money that we have in the budget, but to use the amount of money that we have in the budget, we're gonna have to make some changes. We studied this from February to June of twenty twenty two. Talking to other counties, looking at our history, looking at our data. And they settled on a hundred percent of poverty being the income guidelines. So the changes. Our income guidelines, we look at the last thirty days when an applicant comes in asking for rent. Or utilities. We look at, okay, a hundred percent of federal poverty income guidelines, which basically it changed looking at. The numbers of people in the home, just looking at one through four. So for one, it increased it by four sixty nine, making it eleven thirty three as the income guidelines for one person. For two, the increase was six thirty one. Making it fifteen twenty six for two in the home. Three in the home increase was seven ninety three, making it nineteen nineteen. For three and, and four, the increase was nine hundred and fifty six dollars, making that income guideline two thousand three thirteen. Also in this manual, we made some adjustments in what we could assist with. One person in the home that went from four fifty to five fifty without utilities included. Two or more in the home assistance going from five fifty to six fifty without utilities included. One in the home assisting going from five hundred to six hundred when utilities are not included. And two or more in the home assistance going from six hundred to seven hundred when utilities are not included. And then we went back to utilities, making a cap of three eighty five. Which that just matches general assistance cap to utilities. The rest of the changes is just word cleanup, taking things out that were already said somewhere else in the manual. That type of thing. This would be the first, first consideration.
Is that.
For this manual.
Brett, is that three eighty five, it's, is that cap per year or per time they come in to make a request?
Let me read what it said, it's temporary benefits are granted for two months in a twelve month period. You know, for indigent veterans or eligible family members.
Thank you.
So two times, yeah.
And Brett.
Yep.
Was the, you said five hundred and sixty three, what, what was that five hundred that you're referencing?
On the, on the dollar number?
Yes. Was that the poverty level that you're referencing? I was.
No, po- poverty level is, is a hundred percent. Which for one person, it's one thousand one hundred and thirty three.
Right, okay, okay.
Yeah, if that's. And I looked up and for twenty twenty three, I didn't see a change on that. Now, one benefit about this, I told the commission. Probably never have to do this, as long as you want to keep it at a hundred percent of poverty. We won't have to, you know, dollar, we were looking at, oh, let's pick this number, pick that number. Well, okay, that might work for a while, but then you're back at. You know, resetting that number. So. That's all we just kind of went with a hundred percent of poverty and we'll let the federal government make the changes for us and we'll just follow that. So. That said. I think, I think there's only been one, one person that, I mean. We're, this isn't going to affect the budget at all, this is just going to be able to allow us to use what we have.
Right.
To help these veterans out, so.
Any questions?
Hi.
I do not.
Okay, all right, so we will. We'll open public hearing, anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step to the podium. See, no one, we will close the public hearing. Any further questions?
No, I'm ready for a motion.
Yes ma'am.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty three dash forty nine, amending the veterans benefits manual in accordance with section twenty two. Dot zero four of the Story County Iowa Code of Ordinance on first consideration. And set second consideration for. Tuesday. January seventeenth. Twenty twenty three.
Second.
Moved and seconded headens.
I.
Merkin.
I.
Basil, I. Thank you Brett.
Thank you.
And we have no additional items, moving to departmental reports. We have engineers quarterly report. Good morning again.
Morning.
Morning Jim.
Do you need a laser pointer? Because we have one now.
Okay, I don't need it today.
See, here when we have it, we don't need it yet.
Next time, I promised not to lose it.
Starting out on the maintenance side of things, this winter started out fairly mild for us, so we were able to get some additional road work. Maintenance projects done with, along with some brush cutting, but the, the last few weeks added more snow and wind. Which required our trucks and motor graders to be out plowing quite a bit. If this continues, the high cost of diesel fuel and overtime could have a big impact on our budget. We'll be discussing our budget tomorrow, but I'll be hitting on the budget quite a bit today. But just give you an example of fuel for diesel, diesel costs didn't come down like gas prices did. As much, so right now we budgeted four hundred thousand for gas and diesel combined. And right now we're reestimating about six hundred thousand spent, so about two hundred thousand over in fuel alone. Our crews worked every day over the Christmas holiday break except for Christmas Day. Fortunately, we got a little break there, so they were able to enjoy Christmas Day, but the rest of the days were long hours. Were mainly out there. The motor graders actually helped out on the pavements, which is somewhat rare. But they were doing no good on the gravels, they'd go through and within ten minutes, they'd be right back to where they were. So it was pointless being out there and somewhat dangerous. So the motor graders helped the trucks just keep the pavements open for as long as they could. So we kind of have an emergency pave system, people could get around if we had, had to. But at night, as soon as we pulled off, they would drift shut. And we estimate about thirty cars were stuck in drifts. But if we weren't out there as much as we were, it would have been a lot more and we would have had a gridlock. So our crews did what they could and did a good job. It was the sustained winds, I don't think I've ever seen the winds in a winter storm stay up for three days, three, usually it's a day. And we're able to make some progress the next day, but we couldn't make any progress for two to three days. We've also been having some truck issues with our snow plowed trucks, getting them repaired in a timely fashion. It has to do with the parts, supply issues like everything else. But we've had one truck in particular, it's been down for four months, cannot get the part. Fortunately, at the very end of that last winter storm with the blizzard, we had two trucks go down with the identical issue within a half hour of each other. The water pumps went out. We were able to get those fixed, fortunately. It's a situation where our dealer in Des Moines didn't have the parts, but another one does. And another dealer does not want to give them up. So it's a big fight all the time constantly to get parts and trying to get in front of the dealers like pulling teeth, so. At the end of the storm, we had five trucks out of fifteen that were down, could not be used. So that's concerning, we got them all back up except for two now, I believe. And then one towards the end of the storm, this is the first time I'd seen this happen, but. We had a tandem truck driving fifty five miles an hour and the front tire actually blew up. It blew the fender off, ruined the hood, bent metal back. It's when a tire that big explodes, it did some serious damage. So about thirteen thousand dollars damage. Should be getting that truck back fairly soon, but did lots of damage.
Fifty five miles an hour and the front tire blew?
Which scared the living daylights out of the driver. Give him credit for keeping it on the road, he did somehow, but he was shook.
And he was.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Moving on to construction projects, we have ten projects planned for twenty twenty three. The first two are the asphalt jobs. Asphalt kind of follows fuel prices, we expect asphalt prices to be up a little bit, but that gets let next week through the DOT. S fourteen bridge has already been let through the DOT and that came in at five hundred and seventy five. Which is about what we estimated because we bumped our estimate up with the latest prices and bridges are getting pretty out of hand. The next one is a local funded bridge, which we don't do too many of them. Think two years ago, we started out with the estimate on that one about four hundred thousand and we're up to about six hundred in our third estimate. Hopefully it comes in the fives, that'll be letting a couple of weeks at a local letting. That's our most concerning one. The good news is the letting today went very well. The box, three, four box culverts there all, we came in about eighty thousand under the numbers here, so that might help fund some of the bridge. And then the last two are box cords that were let through the DOT because they're on FM routes and they came in a little under as well. So box cords are coming in under and bridges are coming in way over. Construction design projects, the Thirteenth Street Rice project that's still on hold. We can talk about that more tomorrow at the budget session, what we want to do with it. But I do want to talk a little about some of the damage being done during construction. Unfortunately, that's a, it's a Nevada project, so we don't have any control over the contractors. So they keep working on the worst possible days. That first snow we got and it was above freezing, so they were hauling nonstop rock and just destroyed the road. So we've kind of indicated in Nevada, they need to keep better control over that and we're gonna stop maintaining their stretch of the gravel if they continue to do that, so. The other thing is we're working with the City Maxwell to apply for city bridge funds. I thought my report was mostly going to be bad news today, but I do have some good news to report on this. We just found out Friday afternoon, we got accepted already, which was way before we thought, so. We're looking at seven hundred thousand dollar bridge funded at a hundred percent, so.
Oh, nice, that's wonderful.
So we got to get the wheels turning a little faster, I thought here, so this. I requested the city apply for it because I knew it was a possibility, but I'm not really expecting much out of the city other than applying for it. So we're gonna have to pick up. I'm pretty sure we'll be able to let the project, I need to talk to DOT about that. But the cities needs to accept it by February third, but they don't meet till February sixth, so the DOT gave us an extension. They're gonna accept it on the sixth. And then the DOT will send out a, a funding agreement and they have ninety days to approve that. But before the City Maxwell approves the funding agreement, I'm sure they're gonna want some assurances from the county that we're gonna take care of all the. Engineering inspection and costs and everything else. And. We can talk about that, the budget tomorrow, but I expect to do that. They're essentially the county bridges, they just own a little, a half of them and it's on a county maintained road, so the city. Doesn't have much interest in these bridges probably, so they're expecting the county to take over the rest and I don't have a problem with that. That's the good news for the day. E fifty seven covert, we discovered a covert under E fifty seven by the DOT project that was going on this summer that needed a board. The DOT board got delayed by many months, so they finally got theirs done, so they did get ours done late in the fall. We've got some work to do ourselves to extend it out down the slope, but we'll do that this upcoming year. Twenty twenty three maintenance projects, we have a contract rock hauling, kind of the north central part of the county and up by Story City as well. We're anticipating seven hundred thousand, we might have to cut that back a little bit, which some of the budget concerns we have going on right now. So maybe a five or six hundred thousand dollar contract by time everything's said and done, we'll kind of see how the winter goes. Some asphalt crack ceiling projects proposed this summer and then some pavement markings. Just give you a quick update on the pavement marking situation, again, that's a shortage situation. Last year, we knew there was going to be a shortage, we did something different when it went directly to the paint supplier and bought the paint. They assured us many times we'd get the paint, the paint roads last year and they delayed us, delayed us, delayed us until, I think we got it in November. Which is too late to paint when it gets too cold. So we had to store, I think there's nine totes at least, they're big totes up in our rolling shed. We had to keep it heated, it lasts for a year, so we'll be able to use it this spring to paint, but we have the paint, this is the good news, but we weren't able to get it down last year. We did have to do a couple of emergency paint jobs with Iowa Plains that had a little paint left and we were charged a premium for that unfortunately. And then a covert liner, we might possibly have to do an E twenty nine, which I'll get to in this next item. The bad news last fall, we thought we got a lot of things fixed and we discovered a large sixty inch metal driveway covert that none of us knew existed. You can see the inlet of the covert and I've never noticed it, but you can't, there's no outlet of the covert and I just never noticed that in the past. So you look in the inlet in the covert and it goes for two hundred feet. And it's in terrible condition. It's actually collapsed. It's. The covert has collapsed so much, it's a foot of the covert sticking up on the inside and the outside's collapsed over on the inside. So it is in really rough shape and it's going to be very difficult to fix for many reasons. I can get to those, some of those later, but this was an unbudgeted expense. We're trying to determine if we can do it in-house safely. Uh there's a big slope that comes down and it's covered. What they did is they filled it because it must have had erosion issues, so they put a pipe in it and then filled it up to try to control that erosion. The other bad thing is while we're looking in the two hundred foot long covert, it goes and it has a bend. It actually has pipes extending uh underneath the twenty-nine. The good news about this two hundred foot covert is not under the pavement. It's just out in that ditch. So it's got some big suck holes in it. If it was under the pavement, we did some real big issues. There's a couple of pipes that go under E twenty-nine unfortunately that connect into this pipe that were fabricated right into the pipe. So there's two thirty-six inch pipes and two twelve inch tiles that go under E twenty-nine and they're all metal culverts and they're all rusted. They're going to be kind of difficult ones to fix, but uh it's all going to be costly, but we're trying to come up with a solution for it. So that was a bad discovery late thing last fall.
So where exactly is this?
Um you know, the little park on the corner of E twenty-nine. The house on the south side of the road, just east of the park. If you notice their driveway, it's a high driveway, so the pipes way down low. It's got a sixty-inch covert under there and it goes down that ditch.
So it's under Dayton?
No, the covert's under their driveway.
Under the drive on the east, on the west side of Dayton.
It's east of Dayton. East of the, the first house east of the park.
Is it up by PMI?
No, this is on E twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine, I'm sorry. The one, the one just before the interstate and on the south side.
On the south side.
Got a big farm, big pole building there.
It's, it's the house. It's back quite a ways, yeah. And the, I don't know if you, it's got huge transmission power lines. Part of the difficulty replacing this is they drove, they're huge poles. They drove one that's almost touching the covert. And so for us to replace the covert, we're going to have to oh uh excavate it all out and they got a huge pole there. I don't know how they're going to hold that up when we excavate. And there's a gas line over the top of the pipe and um there's all kinds of difficulties on getting it replaced. But uh you drive by there sometime, you'll notice the inlet of the covert, but you'll see on the other side of the driveway, there is no outlet of the covert because it goes two hundred feet. Uh FY twenty-three, but uh we have another budget items that are running high this year due to the large price increases we're seeing. Some of these are fuel, equipment, tires really went up, uh metal culverts, I think are finally starting to come down. And then construction projects, bridges in particular. We were just notified recently of another fifteen percent increase in rock prices from Martin Marietta. So that's thirty-two percent in two years. That's a lot when we're spending a million and a half a year. Um high inflation is going to impact our budget more than most other apartments. Uh and the fuel tax is not adjusted for inflation, so we're really going to have to look for other possible funding sources. Just to keep up. Dump truck orders. We finally received our single axle dump truck that was ordered in the February of twenty-one. And the mechanic service truck that was budgeted last FY also showed up. Um we have another tandem that's already been ordered, but we may not see that till FY twenty-four. We're looking at some possible ways to get trucks ordered a little sooner, even before the budget is approved for the next year. So we can actually receive these trucks maybe in the year that they're budgeted, probably not even then. But so right now we have two tandems in our proposed FY twenty-four budget. They can't even give us prices yet because they're so far out, but what they've done is they've stuck us in the build line to get us in order. But because they can't give us prices, uh they were able to put us in line anyway. And as soon as they can give us prices, I'm going to bring it to the board for approval, but that might be before the board even approves the budget. So that's something we've never done in the past, but it's something I'm going to uh request we do. Um the equipment budget, same issues. Um we're just having a difficult time even finding suppliers that will order a signed truck chassis. Nobody will order one. Um the heavier duty trucks, they just won't order right now, period. Uh so we're going to have to delay that one a year or two. Uh we've also seen a large increase in the cost of equipment that was purchased this FY already. Um so to make up for some of that cost overrun, we, we've delayed the purchase of two pickups that we had budgeted for fifty thousand. Um and we're just delaying those indefinitely for now. Uh bridge inspections, this is uh every two years we get bridge inspections done. They're about halfway done through this winter with our bridges and we were notified of a couple so far ahead. Issues that needed uh identified and uh remedied quickly. One was in Collins twenty-three is a wood bridge. Uh we lowered it to five ton posting on the bridge, but we were able to get out the very next day and uh replace a piling. It was a, wasn't a difficult fix, so we were able to get that done the next day. Um at that bridge is actually getting replaced this summer is the good news, so that's somewhat of a temporary fix. The other one's up north by uh Lincoln thirty-five or Lincoln twenty-five. And we just posted that bridge for now, lowered the posting until we can get in there to fix that one. At our annual conference, um we learned of a lot of new regulations coming into effect with federal bridge inspections especially. It's going to end up costing a lot more money. Essentially, the new system going in place. There's about eighty fields you got to fill that, fill out for a bridge inspection and it's, they're bumping that up to about a hundred and thirty, I think. And they have to redo them all, so it's a lot of data entry. So it's going to be a lot more uh time consuming, which means cost for us. And there's a new requirement to rate all of our bridges for fire trucks, which is going to be difficult. And there is a law in Iowa that fire emergency vehicles don't have to follow bridge postings, so the feds are telling us we have to do it anyway. So we have nine fire districts, so we might have to get the specs for all the fire trucks. And then we got to rate all the bridges in that area that they can possibly go for that fire truck and then get back to them and tell them where they can't go. So that'll be a brand new process. Uh the new federal transportation bill. Again, I'm on the, we have a grants committee that all the counties put together to try to group together and get some of the funding for that. A grant coordinator job has been filled. We hired because it's going to take a lot of work and um there's no county jurors that have the time to dedicate to grant writing. So this person will be grant writing and doing all the uh tracking, FEMA tracking on the FEMA site for that. Or the federal grants website. Um the safety funds SS four A, we've applied all ninety-seven counties applied in a group application. We think we're getting, we haven't heard yet, but we think we're going to get that, but now we're back. The difficulty of the feds are saying one county is going to have to take on the burden of the entire funding and I'm not sure any one county is going to step up to do that. For this one in particular, because the feds are now saying only for the SS four A. Somewhere in the bill got put in there, the DOT cannot assist us at all. And so the feds are going to make sure the county has an entire federally process in place and we don't have that. No county has that. We rely on the DOT to do the uh NEPO, which is environmental. They have offices for all these uh sign-offs we got to do and process. They're saying we can't use that at all. The county has to have their own system, so. And that's going to make it even more difficult for one county to step up and accept the whole funding for everybody because they got to they would have to make sure all the counties have this federally process in place and it, it's not going to be easy. So that, that grant looks a little worse than uh it did before.
And that's the SS four A?
Yeah, the first round, if we get accepted, that just pays for a consultant to do a study for every county for the safety plan. So unfortunately, what I kind of anticipated what's happening is a lot of this, like the money is going towards consultants and hiring new positions and it's not going to the roads. That was my fear from the start with all this. Now the BIP is a, a bridge program uh we've already applied for. There's eight bridges. Unfortunately, none of them are in Story County. But uh it's an application that counties put together last year for another grant that was denied, but we just reissued it. And then the newest one at the bottom is the raise grant. Um Linda, you sent me something on that recently asking if we knew about that one and yes, we do. A NOFO comes out, which is a notice of funding opportunity and they only give you like a month or two to get the application in. And that's not a lot of time um to hire a consultant and get a grant application put in, but we were prepared ahead of time. Again, it, the group decided to fund uh some of the bigger, more expensive bridges. So we could get an application in and that just included eight bridges. Unfortunately, none are in Story County. Like I said, I'm on the committee, but the committee does not allow you to see which counties. We come up with a formula, but we're not, we blackout the counties, so we can't see which county is ranking high with proposals. So we were fairly high with uh one fiftieth bridge over the skunk, but it did not quite meet the eight bridges. So we're applying for eight bridges for twenty-seven million, so these are two to five million dollar bridges. We don't really have any in that category right now, unfortunately. Well, fortunately, we don't, I guess. We don't have any that need replaced that are that expensive. So we, that application is due by February and um we hope to uh get at least twenty-seven million for Iowa out of that. Moving on to uh new legislation. One is the all terrain vehicles. We already saw one fatality last year on the gravel road with ATV. The main thing I wanted to point out again on this is with the law, we weren't quite sure if the board had to take some sort of action to make a map of roads or not. Uh we had attorney at ISAC come and talk to us and he says we do not have to take any action. We can just rely on the state law. So we don't have to. We can create roads with more pavements that they could use if we wanted to, but we're not required to. Then the very complicated one is that all systems permit for heavier loads. This permit took effect January first of this year, so it is currently in effect. It allows twelve percent over the current allowable limits. Uh so that means we have to rerate all of our bridges again for that new loading, which is very time consuming and expensive, so we have not done that. What I have done, uh we're required by twenty twenty-five to participate one way or another. But in the meantime, I just put our pave system on because I know that our pave system can take that, that loading without re-rating them. We do have one bridge up on E eighteen by Story City that's load posted, so I restricted that pavement only. So I submitted that map to the DOT about three weeks ago, adding that system in for payments that can use all system permit. They have not updated the map yet. I don't know how long it will take them to update the map yet. So I'm, I'm getting calls from farmers that are applying for these permits and they're saying Story County is restricted. I'm like, well, we're not. So call the DOT because I, I don't, uh there was very little planning that went in to get in this bill passed. They did not consult the counties, but there's a lot that has to happen behind this to get this up and really working properly. So in particular, two of the farmers that have called me, I didn't know if putting the pave system on would really help that much because most farmers have to come off the gravel to get to the pavements. But the two that called me so far, one just hauls from Marshall County, just comes across Highway thirty and uses pavements to get to the co-op. And then Steve Colton, that was the other one, he's on a pavement where he hauls all his stuff in. So both of them said just putting the pavements on the system is really helpful to them. They can get the permits and haul the heavier loadings. Uh so it is helpful for them, but uh I don't know when it, DOT is going to update their maps to get it on the on the permit system right now. And it's not on here, but the lost bill, I sent you an email about that. It just popped up uh recently on some possible changes to lost and it's concerning the counties. A lot of, a lot of road departments get a lot of money from lost. We just get about two hundred and fifty thousand a year currently in Story County. But um anything, it's going to affect all the loss for the rest of the county as well, so that's a bill to keep an eye on. Um city veins construction, the city veins closed five eightieth north of Lincoln Highway for the utility expansion. That was only supposed to take two weeks. It's been a couple of months at least now. So that they have, have went ahead and closed Lincoln Highway at the same time. It wasn't originally planned, but um they hoped to have five eightieth open fairly soon, but it's going to be just rock for a portion because they can't pave right now. The Lincoln Highway closure is expected to last possibly till May or even June. So detour traffic is encouraged to use Eighteenth Street or Six Hundred pavements to get to Highway thirty and not use the gravel roads in the area right now. City of Nevada construction, Nevada started the new sewer line construction south of town. They are closing two hundred and seventieth street, our gravel road today um to do their pipe crossing. I gave them a maximum of two days to get that completed because it's going to close the gravel road through the area. So by Wednesday, Thursday, they should have it back open. Um they have a signed detour route in place though. The other crossing they're going to have to do is South S Avenue, but right now they plan on doing that in the spring, so. I didn't really like uh doing a deep cut on a gravel road in the middle of winter with frozen ground, but they said they had no op- option. So they're backfilling with a lot more rock than they normally would and um we could have a kind of a messy soft road in the spring. But uh they really wanted to do it, so I, I allowed it. Um DOT construction, the DOT, uh well, they'll be starting Highway thirty pavement reconstruction just uh east of Nevada here on Highway thirty this spring or summer. That will close the eastbound lanes for four miles over to Colo. And traffic will be head to head on the, the other lanes for quite a while. And that will require the closure of some of the gravel roads that come up uh on the south side of Highway thirty. So I'm sure we'll have some dust control and stuff in place for those detours. DOT is also starting work on the S fourteen bridge over the highway thirty here south of Nevada. And the new interchange at five eightieth, the dirtwork portion is going to start here this spring. I would also mention in the fifth year of the DOT construction program, they did add the airport road interchange. We weren't sure if that would officially get added to the program or not, but it did. So, but that's five years out. Drainage District Projects, DD eighty-three, it's over in the eastern central part of Story County. Hertz Farm Management requested us come out, look at some eight inch tile. They thought we needed to replace for a few hundred feet. It turned out after we looked at it, that the eight inch was fine, but there was another tile south of it, a twelve incher that was bad for about thirteen hundred feet. He had a contractor out there working and wanted it replaced right away and it just didn't work out, especially with thirteen hundred feet of twelve inch. So I have turned this over to Bolton and make to use their watchman service to take it over from here. There's some, a lot of other issues going on. They wanted to use a a single wall plastic twelve inch to replace it. And Bolton made verified that reduces the capacity, so that is really not allowed. And it has cover issues, which is why the twelve inch clay one is crushing because there's only a foot to two foot of cover on the uh over the tile, so the tile is getting crushed by the heavy farm equipment. So it was best to get Bolton to make um involved and they've reached out to the Hertz. And I'm also al- always a little nervous when Hertz Farm Management requests a drainage district uh repair replacement because they're not actually paying the money the landowner is. I always want input from somebody who's actually going to pay the bills. But this one, the twelve inches, obviously it needs, needs work. The other issue is going to be how we're going to pay for it with these types of repairs. I guess at least twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Um and there's nothing in the drainage district account right now and of course, the landlord wants it done right away, so there's not time to levy. So might get into some issues on how we're going to pay for that, but we'll get a report back from Bolton and make and see how uh they would like to proceed. Five-year construction program workshop, uh I'll be contacting the board soon about setting a date. We usually do it late February, uh Tuesday after a board meeting in the afternoon. Uh so I'll be sending something out about it, a good date for you guys on that. Um job openings, the design engineer position we had uh open uh and the engineering tech position were both filled. Uh, and the engineering tech position were both filled in-house for now. Um, so right now we plan just to hold off for a little while. On, we have a lead tech position open now. We'll talk about this a little bit more at the budget meeting tomorrow, but uh, we might hold off. We're going to need a little bit more consultant money, especially with the Maxwell Bridge. Uh, being approved so quickly, we might use some of that money for this technician position to pay for some of the these increased uh consultant. Uh, bills that are coming up. And I do plan to bring up the hose of the board to increase our summer wage. It's currently at fifteen dollars an hour, and we only received one applicant last year. Uh, we did attract one more uh employee a little bit ways through the summer. Um, so we ended up with two for most of the summer, but we we need to track more. I I know some counties. Lynn County was paying twenty dollars an hour last year. Um, they were able to hire like seven or eight, I think, but uh. I would love to have four or five, we could find them, so we're going to have to try to attract them somehow. Didn't want to touch quickly on pipelines I didn't have on my list. I met with Navigator a week or two ago. I'm on the fourth permit person now. So I'm right back to square zero. They keep changing permitting people, so they come in and they're at square one starting, have no idea about the permit process, so. Around the fourth one, there kind of seems to be behind Summit, Summit's a little more organized. So we still need to get the drainage district crossing policy approved by the board, and Ethan's got that, and. Our next watershed group will talk about that, I'm sure, more, and we need to appoint Bolton and make as a drainage district engineer for those. Um, but one of the issues is locating the district tile and how that gets done. Summit wants it done fairly soon. They would prefer. The county find somebody to go out and dig and find them. Tyler with Bolton Mink would rather, and I agree with Tyler, have. Summit go out with their contractors and dig, and Tyler will help them. There's another Bolton and Mink engineer that's working with Green County, and they're doing it a bit different. They're going out and hiring a contractor to. I don't know who's paying the bill, but they're they're hiring a contractor to go out and locate them. Um, but that's a different engineer than Tyler, and it's just a different process that Summit heard about. Summit's concerned they can't get out and dig because the project isn't approved, but it's a drainage district tile, so we. There is some rights to go out uh uh and do work on the district tile. We'll have to work with the landowners and ask permission to go out there, but. You have to go out and dig ahead of times because they need to design the. The route, and they can't design it till they know where the district tile is, and these district tiles are going to be hard to find. I'm not quite sure how it's going to be done, but. That's something we need, we're going to have to work out, um, but I prefer the route of. Summit doing the work and uh Bolton and make assisting.
I I mean, if if they've got the agreements with the landowners.
Then it would be, I think, easy, I, but what?
Are they wanting?
Thirty percent last I heard of. Is it more now?
They say they're over sixty, I think.
They're wanting to to identify the um district tiles regardless of whether they've got. The agreements in place with landowners.
Yeah. We don't know the depth of them or where they're actually even located, so they have to go out and dig and find them.
Where's Ethan on the permit?
I think it's ready to go. We just, I don't know if we need to talk about one more time at the waters or the uh. Pipeline meeting before it comes to the board or if it's ready to come to the board, I'm not. But I think we've got it all worked out.
Well, you and Scott have worked with him on it, haven't you?
Yeah.
I think it's just come to the board.
Just ready to go. They've all been delayed, so I think we have a little bit more time, but uh. Navigators talking, uh. Think earliest would be the spring of twenty-four. They could start work, but Summit could actually start work possibly this fall. That is it. Any questions?
I don't. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Lots, lots of info.
And thank you to your your crews for everything that they did over the holiday. That was.
Was a tough one.
It was a very tough one, yeah, but we we were seeing things all over social media, though, people appreciating the work that was happening out there, so.
We had more compliments than complaints, that doesn't happen.
Good.
It was good.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, next we have quarterly report for planning and development. Hi, Amelia. Welcome back.
Okay, so this is our fourth quarter report, but I use some annual data too. Um, so this is first just the fourth quarter permitting trends, and we're going to talk more about this. Is it looks annually, but. The number of new dwellings is really low, and it's probably related to mortgage rates. Um, I looked back at our data for the year, and we started to see a decrease in the spring, right when mortgage rates started going up. So interestingly, though, we still have a ton of solar arrays. It's our most common permit type. I think it's been the most common permit type. All four quarters this year, so we had ten permits per solar. Um, and then it's just a map of where everything was occurring. Um, and annual permits, so again, we've had a really. Um, pronounced decrease in the number of permits for new dwellings um that we typically see. Again, I think it's related to, you know, the stock market dip, mortgage rates are up. Nationally, the American Home Builders Association is reporting that um. Starts are down sixteen percent on average and twenty-two percent um down. Um, for just new new permits being pulled, so we're a little bit higher than that national trend. Could be compounded by trends in farmland prices too, because when you're building in the county, you're usually buying agricultural land. Um, the National Home Builders Association is projecting, though, that the trend will continue to decrease in terms of new construction. Throughout next, this year, um, and maybe by twenty twenty-four. Um, things will pick back up. I I folks aren't saying there's going to be another housing bubble or anything like that. It's just. Simply a result of the mortgage rates and some of the changes in the housing market due to the pandemic. And I think with the fact that we've got a lot of farmland we're dealing with in the unincorporated area, we're seeing more pronounced trends.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Do you ever get comparable data from other counties like Polk and Dallas?
I could, I, if they track it, yeah.
I would just be curious because we hear so much about Ankeny and residential development in Dallas County. If they're seeing the same trends.
Sure. I can look into that, yeah. Um. We are seeing more development cases, though, so that includes subdivisions and conditional use permits higher than the last year. Um, which is a good trend. And then annually we're up as well. And the development cases we saw this quarter, um, I thought I'd touch on briefly because you don't see a lot of them. And so we had a new substation that Alliant Energy is building in between Roland and McCall'sburg that'll serve those um communities for many years in the future. Um, improves the resiliency of the electric grid in that area. Um, we also have a new bed and breakfast that was approved and event venue in Historic Barn just outside of Huxley. Um. We did do those text amendments to our code to allow accessory dwelling units, um, the ordinance related to hazardous materials pipelines. Um, and then adaptive reuse of historic barns, which was then used to per- permit the event venue. Um, and we've done some ongoing work on our natural resources ordinance, Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Um, code compliance officer position to share with cities and updates to our home business ordinance this quarter. Questions?
Been busy.
Yeah.
Busy year.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions right now.
I do not either.
Well, thank you.
Questions, Linda?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have discussion of draft manure crossing policy. And welcome back.
Okay, what if, is it just a draft policy at this point? It's been a long time since we've implemented a new policy in our department. Um, so I'm not even sure of the process. That's something I'm also going to ask for a little help with on what process you want me to follow. Um, but first of all, what this is, is um. What farmers are doing with most of the KFOs is they would rather um. Tube the manure to the fields through culverts or. Um, we've caught a couple with pipes laying over the top of roads, which essentially closes the road down. We don't want that to happen, so that's one thing the policy does is. Requires uh to go under a culvert instead of over the top of the road. Um. So they either tube it or they they haul it with what we call honey wagons. Um, and those do a lot of damage to our roads. Just to give you a quick example. Study was done. On the loadings, an eighty thousand pound semi uh could pass a a seven inch thick. Concrete pavement one hundred and thirty-five thousand times before failure. Where the liquid manure tank, the honey wagon is less than thirty.
Oh.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, that's the difference. You're talking the loading on those tires are just incredible. Uh, so it really damages our pavements, so we like to get those, the farmers know it, so they also like to get them off the roads if. Damages the gravel roads as well when they're soft. Um, so they like to use the piping as well. So what, the reason why we need a policy is one to um spell out who pays for the pipe and who pays for the installation. And then second, um, a spill prevention plan is required for what happens if there's a a spill in the road right away. We mostly use the Hamilton County permit. It seemed to be the most comprehensive one we could find, and it had a really good spill prevention. Policy where a lot of them didn't have much at all. Um, so we use theirs as our template and made some changes. They've used theirs in Hamilton for over twenty years, and they've said it's worked well for them. Um, we took the policy to the watershed group first um to get their comments. There was some questions about the contractors and the length of the hoses and. I was able to pass some of those questions by. One of the farmers requesting this policy, just to give you some of the answers on that. The one particular farmer uses a contractor for pumping currently. Sarah was able to get me a list of all the pumping contractors, a lot more than I thought. They actually have to get some approvals through the DNR. Uh, so we have a listing, so if we do create, approve this policy, I can send it out to some of the local pumping companies. Um, so they do use a contractor, some do them themselves, but very few. Um. He believes his contractor uses a six inch hose, um, but some go up to eight inch hoses. So he thought a twelve inch culvert under the road would be big enough, but I think we're going to require a fifteen inch minimum. Um, technically, he said you can pump as far as you want. You just keep adding more pumps down the road, and you can keep the line going for miles and miles, but he said. Far as he's concerned, once you get about three miles out, uh, the cost outweighs the benefit, so he. Said rarely would he go beyond two miles of pumping. Um, he also wanted to mention that, again, it cuts down the wear and tear of the roads by keeping the honey wagons off, and then. He also wanted to point out it allows him to spread the manure across more fields over time, helping to spread the organic fertilizer over more of his acres. Rather than relying on synthetic fertilizer. So he wanted to point out that benefit. So we got a lot of those questions answered, um. So in a nutshell, the policy requires uh the request or the applicant, they pay for the pipe. And the installation cost. I've left it open to whether we we install them. We would rather install them ourselves, but we might not have time, so it's left open where that we might require them to hire a contractor to do the work. And the permit spells out a lot of requirements the contractor needs to follow if they they install it. So that's the main thing. It spells out they will pay for all that work and uh their response for maintaining the covert if. Uh, needs maintenance in the future, paying for that maintenance anyway. So for the most part, that's what the policy says, um. There's questions on whether this needs to go out for a seven or fourteen day review. I think that's more for internal policies. I don't know if this would, if the board can just. Approve it if I bring a a final draft back, um. That's some of the guidance I'll need on approving a new policy. Any questions you have at all about the policy here?
Um, I've been thinking about this quite a while because I've seen it in a couple of ways, and I I did have some more questions.
Sure.
So it says in your policy that they need to remove the hose forty-eight hours after they're done pumping. It doesn't give a limit on the duration of pumping, how long they're going to be pumping each event.
Yeah.
Can you tell me how long they're usually doing this? And.
Don't believe he commented on that, um.
Let me tell you the reason I'm asking. Is I understand the rationale that this gets the honey wagons off the roads and honey wagons do a lot of damage to roads. Manure spills do a lot of damage to water. And I'm, and most of the wa- you know, the ECO lie that we have in our water is because of manure. And we have manure spills going on all the time in Iowa. I'm not real confident that, and we know that if this damage to the hose, if they're using a hose. That isn't um integral, you know, that we can have a spill, goes in a ditch. Some of our dishes that goes into drainage. I'm not real comfortable just saying, oh, they're going to do it, and if a spill happens, they're going to clean it up. I feel like we should know pretty soon if there's a spill. Um, I've thought about how do we do that? Do we rely on them? Do we require that they check on them every twenty-four hours or twice a day or something like that? Um, or do we do it? And I would prefer honestly that we do it. I know that's a chart, that's a cost to your department, and I was thinking about whether a permit fee could cover that cost.
Okay.
That's where I'm going with it.
Um, just to give you an idea how it's set up now, the, when they fill out the actual permit. Uh, we'll have the policies one thing, and then we have the permit, and at the bottom it says approximate duration of pumping and the pumping rate. So the permit is for one time, and then we have, uh. I didn't put it on the agenda, but what we have is kind of a renewal permit, so when you have this pipe in the. In place and uh the site's been established, then there's an easier permit for a renewal, so they want to pump again. Um, so that's.
And it doesn't say how long they can pump, it just says get the hose. Out forty-eight hours after you're done.
Yeah.
They could say three months, what would you say?
Approximate duration on the permit they have.
But if they said.
They could say, yeah, three months, but I, that's not really the intention of this, so I I do see where we probably need to put a.
That we should have a range that's acceptable.
Yeah.
And what do you think about the idea of the county checking regularly to make sure when we have a permit active? That there aren't problems.
I agree, that's a better way to do it. I I struggle with having somebody available to always run out. Because you know they're going to call the day they're pumping, and to always have somebody available is going to be difficult.
There, there are pressure meters, flow meters and or pressure meters that they're going to be using to keep track of. Whether there is or is not a leak. Maybe there would be some way for them to share that data. Make that data accessible, but a- again, it practically speaking.
We talked about the watershed group possibly when they. Want to start pumping, that they take a picture of the the crossing and the hose, so we don't have to run out. Um, that was one option. But then monitoring after that's another issue.
What if we had a charge for each permit? I know you talked to have the person available, but what's an hour of overtime cost? Could it be that? Could it could it somehow? Be. I'm just concerned that if it doesn't, if if there's get noticed what the environmental damage is and how that gets cleaned up then.
And I guess my other question would be, how many are you anticipating that would?
This one particular farmer has already requested six or eight sites, pipes to be put in. I don't know beyond that. I think there's some more going on already. Collins Colo area. So I think it's happening out there more than we know already.
So it's happening through our culverts or over the road?
I think they must be finding culverts to go under. If it goes over a road, essentially closes. We usually find out about that. And we haven't heard of too many of those going on.
Without us having this policy, is that a legitimate use of our culverts or are people doing something they should not be doing?
The permit spells that out pretty well. We go out and look at the site to see if the pipe's adequate for using existing pipes.
But if people are using our culverts without our permission?
Yeah. That that's, we currently have a use of right away policy, so they should be getting permission already through that permit. But that's another reason to get this permit in place. We have something more to stand on. Say why that shouldn't be happening without our notification.
I guess I I guess I would be curious to know what software they're using to monitor their their pumps, their pressures. And if there wouldn't be a way to, for them to share that information with the county as kind of a mutual, we know you're keeping an eye on this. But, you know, just for the sake of safety and and heading off problems, we were hoping you'd be willing to share that information with us, like live access to that information. Because I would think there's some sort of alarm or notification that they get if there's a problem because they don't want to be dumping it into the ditches either.
Yeah, that's something I'll have to ask contractors because I'm not real familiar with the process.
Right, right. But I mean, if if they do have some sort of notification, maybe they would be on board with system with us. And then nobody watch, spending time watching it.
Where's the software? Is it in the spill plan draft? We talk about that.
I I don't, I I did not read that there was specific software. I'm just assuming that there's nobody sitting there watching all of the pressures. So there would, there, I mean.
When available flow meters or pressure meters on the applicator will be used to monitor whether a leak or spill is occurring. Okay, that's in the Hamilton County plan and it says when available. So we don't know that all operators would have it.
Right, right. I mean.
I'd just like to see a little more assurance that if there is a spill, it's going to get detected pretty quickly and it's going to get resolved. And I don't know if it's through that or it's through us getting, requesting or us putting a cost on each permit and using that cost to pay staff costs or what it is. I'm just concerned that we don't look back, do this and look back at it and say, gee, that was great and we assumed everything was going to be fine, but everything wasn't fine. And we've got a huge manure spill on our hands and everybody's going like this.
Right, right.
I don't want that to happen in Story County.
Right. No, I think they're good questions.
How many other counties are doing this?
I saw five or eight other counties that I was able to find the permits for. I don't have a good feel for how many. Marshall County is the only neighboring county that have told me they do not have a permit process. They just kind of let it happen.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Jaren. I'm sorry.
Marshall is the only one I've I've talked to so far that doesn't have an actual permit. They just kind of let it happen.
And how many counties do you have a permit system besides Hamilton?
I've found five or eight, but that's just ones I could find without asking how many have them.
Okay.
Do you know of those five or eight, if they've had any issues?
Marshall didn't have a policy. Hamilton's one I've talked about and they felt like it was working well. But I got the feeling, you know, there wasn't a lot of oversight.
I did talk to the DNR at one point after this came to came to the water quality group and at the state level I couldn't find anything. And I was at one point going to try to talk to a north central Iowa person. And I don't have the contact information anymore because something else happened. It didn't get done. But but yeah, I was trying to find out are there, have there been spills with this? And I, DNR did not have a good statewide database that was good to look at.
A lot of the counties I talked to, they they're actually, county engineers are so willing to get these wagons off the roads that they're paying for the installation of culverts even. I think it was about fifty fifty, the ones that paid for it and ones that made the applicant pay for it. But the inspection part, that's going to be a difficult one because I mean, this could be going on weekends and to have somebody available at all times to run out there is going to be difficult. Because I will try talking to some of these contractors now that I have a listing I can give call and see how, what the process even is and how they track pressures and then how they monitor crossings and.
Could we, could we simply require in the permit that the contractor do, would check daily and would notify us? I I I feel better if we would be doing it, quite frankly. I'm concerned about relying on the contractors requiring or relying on the the landowners who are doing, the owners of the of the operations. But something to make sure that we have.
Once we get a pipe put in, that will get notified at all that it's going on. We have the same issue with utilities and everything else. Once they think they know, they've got somewhat of a permission to do something, it just, it happens. And that's going to be a struggle enough for us just to keep track of, keep an eye on who's pumping with permission and not permission alone. Watching it while it's pumping.
Have we had roads damaged in Story County by honey wagons? Have you seen this?
I'm sure we have. I can't point a specific instance, but most of the damages were when people are hauling grain out on a bad, soft road day that one truck after another, the honey wagons don't do as much back and forth. It's just the one time they go on pavements, it really damages them. The one little stretch I know where I just happened to see the honey wagon this fall, R seventy, R seventy comes down to E twenty nine. And I've always noticed a bad stretch of shoulder there and that's right where he turned and pulled into the driveway. That stretch is worse. It's breaking up the asphalt.
I just don't want to end up with us having a problem that's worse than one we're trying to solve.
Yeah.
It's, it's already happening out there is the thing. So we're just trying to control it a little bit better, the best we can. I'll try to think of more ways to address your comments and talk to some contractors. And if you can think of specifics to add into here and I can make changes and it can always be adjusted in the future too. But for now, I I wanted to get it in front of you to look at and get your thoughts. It's just a draft at this point, so. This, like I said, one particular farmer would, he wanted something in place this fall to get the pipes in this fall. But he was fine with delaying it till spring, but he definitely would like something in place by spring.
So March. If you say spring, do you mean March, February?
He he's asking for new crossings, so I I want the frost out of the ground before we're digging across roads to put new pipes in. So we're probably April, May. And then as far as the policy itself, when I get more of a final draft, I'll send it through Ethan, but I'm not sure who to ask about the actual policy process and the review process or anything. My opinion, it's just a secondary road policy, so I I should be able to just bring it to the board and you should approve it. One, yes or no, I don't think, unless you wanted this to go out for public review somehow. Normally, we wouldn't do that, but think about that as well.
Sure. All right, thank you, Darren. Thanks, Jaren. Appreciate your work on this. Hold on, I can't put my agenda now. Sorry. Any upcoming agenda items?
No.
Now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the podium. Seeing no one will close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Heddens?
It's basically budget work sessions for the next week.
Supervisor Merkin?
Looks about the same.
Same for me as well. There is a you know, we've got asset joint funders, but that's next week, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong week. There it is. There is a retirement event for Steve McGill tomorrow evening gatherings at five o'clock. I don't know if you saw that or not while you were out. Yeah, other than that, just budget, budget, budget and more budget. Okay, anything further?
And we adjourn second.
Moved in seconded Heddens.
Hi.
Merkin.
Hi.
Basil, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.